Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. So, our first item on the agenda is the minutes from February 13. I thought they looked pretty good. Does anybody have any comments or?
I do not.
Oh, well, then I guess Hebe and Rich should, you were both there at last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, let's have you vote on this. I accept a motion to, uh, just to set the minutes a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Terrific, they're passed. The second item of discussion will be the curb cut regulations. And.
And Tim, I have, um.
What you had written.
Yeah, I had written this.
What you sent to me.
Right.
I just, I put it in a Word doc and I gotta teach you how to send stuff other than JPEGs.
I know, I don't have it. I have, I have a couple here.
So, uh, Tim and I met with Scott last week. And, um, I don't know that you really need to read those because we kinda came up with an outcome, which I can tell you what that was. But there, there were a couple of changes that we had looked at in our previous meeting. One of the items was item six on page four, dealing with the grade. And the second was, and raised quite a bit of discussion, was on number eight, dealing with culverts, requiring culverts to be placed outside the road right of way. And, um, that was something that, um, was a focus of our discussion primarily with Scott. And, um, he, he does, while he, I, I think what he was trying to get across was, he doesn't wanna see driveway culverts chewing into the roadway, which he sometimes sees contractors kinda excavating and they're excavating into the road and if anything, they're moving the drainage ditch closer to the road rather than further from the road. So, he agrees that placing them outside the road right of way is probably not something that would ever happen. So, um, you know, he, I think he is fine with just making sure that the placement length and diameter of culverts shall be as approved by, by him. And, um, and so, we were, we were just gonna strike everything. All the bold print there, culvert shall be placed outside the road right of way and the road agent may waive the requirement at their discretion. So, that would just go away. And what we would add in its place is placement comma length and diameter of culvert shall be as approved by the road agent. And, um, we had a little bit of discussion there. I don't know, David, if you have any, um, any legal concerns on whether. I have concerns in terms of whether the town is actually determining the sizes of culverts or whether they are just reviewing and approving the culverts. Cause I don't think we really should, the town should be getting, being responsible for, for determining the size. I mean, I think in many cases.
Well, Scott determines the size, so.
No, not even. I mean, that, the, I would be up to the landlord to determine the size. If they were to make it too small or.
But I think though, I mean, I agree in a way, but I think the problem is if it's too, if the landlord decides to put in too small a culvert and it backs up, then it's gonna damage the road.
That's why he has to approve it.
He should approve it.
He should approve it, but he's not, he's not taking the liability, the town's not getting, taking the liability.
Doing the calculations and runoff and.
Yeah.
You need to make that clear to Scott then, that it's, you know, he's, you know, he can say, if they wanna put in a 12-inch culvert and it needs a 16, that he can deny the permit because the culvert in his judgment isn't big enough. Yep.
I, I mean, I think we're, we're in a, we're in a kind of a fine line here where there are probably many out there that the, the property owner doesn't. I don't think that we're looking for the property owner to necessarily get an engineer on every single one. But I just think that.
And, and look, informally, if they come to Scotty and say, what do they need? And he says, well, you're probably need a 16 and then they give that, they're still making the decision.
That's what happens.
Yeah.
Scott says, you know, when he decides culvert and that's what.
But he doesn't put it, doesn't do any calculations or put it in writing or anything like that.
No, it's just a verbal thing.
Exactly.
When they, yeah, cause he has purview of the culvert, so he just tells them what size they need.
Yeah, but I believe that that is on the, the curb cut, um, permit. You look at the last page, it has a size.
Yeah, it does.
So, that will need to be changed on.
Where is, where is?
That cross-section thing. Size, distance from the road and.
This is in our ordinance?
In the, in the, the cross-sections that we were looking at last meeting.
Oh, the state ones?
Where the little blanks are, yeah.
But that's not in there.
That's not in our.
David, weren't we saying that you were gonna use one of those?
No.
No.
I don't, I don't think so.
So, so the landlord comes and says, I got this big. And Scotty says, no, it's gotta be this big. The landlord can go back and get an engineer to say, I mean, if they, they could just say, okay, fine. If they say, not, no, I really only want it to be this big. Scotty can say, you gotta show me, you know, an engineer has to tell me that this is gonna be okay. I mean, that, and, and I think that's sufficiently unlikely to happen.
Yeah.
That, I mean, if an engineer signs off on it, then.
Building a road, a culvert is budget dust.
And nine out of 10 times, it's not the land, the landlord, it's not the, it's the person that's putting the culvert in. And they know, and they work with Scott, they just say, this is what we need and the landlord doesn't care. I mean, you know.
Well, I, I, yes, of course, it's the excavator or the, whoever's putting it in.
Right.
But they're, the landlord is represented. They're coming to Scotty and saying, so this is what we wanna do.
Right.
So, I'm, I am content to let the road agent approve it.
So, this is what the, the permit, or is currently on the permit itself.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Um, and so, and that's to be completed by road agent and planning board representative. So, um, somehow, they need to communicate to the property owner that it's their responsibility to have a determination of that culvert size. And then, that this is not, and length.
And what?
And length, if you wanna.
Right. Well, the regs say they have to be at least 12 inches.
Right. Which is generally too small for these days.
Right, right.
So, it just, you know, we'll have to update the, the permit to, um, be very clear that.
Or do we, do we add a, do we have part of this section is to be filled out by the town? Part of it is to be filled out by the applicant?
Yeah, that, you know, if we go back up to the applicant.
So, which is to me.
Portion, you can, um, you know, put in extra.
You can put in the culvert diameter.
Culvert diameter, length, or none, if there's a case where there are, it's not needed.
But just to be clear, so are we saying, are you saying that Scott could get in trouble for specifying the size of the culvert?
I'm just saying, yeah, that, I, I don't think the town wants to take on the liability of sizing people's driveway culverts.
Absolutely, if the town were to be making that decision and it turns out to be wrong and it causes damage to the, to the property owner, then they could come back and say, well, you told me I had to do it this size and now look, my basement flooded because the culvert was too small and it backed up into my yard and flooded my basement.
Right, so the, the homeowner comes and says, I wanna put in a 15-inch culvert. If Scotty said, well, that's not fine to me, done, it's fine. The homeowner said, this is what I want. Scotty said, this is not a flagrant crazy idea and so it's done. If, if it turns out to be too small, it's the homeowner that, that said, I want this size culvert.
Yeah, Scott's approval just indicates that he doesn't, that it doesn't, the size they've selected doesn't pose a problem from a road perspective. It doesn't say this is a bad size.
No, immediately obvious problem.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, I mean.
And Scott's gonna be looking at the culverts up and down the road and, you know, and using his best judgment if he's, if he's talking informally. But hopefully, if, if the, if he's at the bottom of a steep hill and it, there's known to be a lot of water there.
Yeah, something, you talk to Scotty and say, when you, if someone asks you what size, your response ought to be given with, well, it should be at least.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, other than that, the town doesn't wanna take on.
Cause he'll say, if it's at least this much, then.
Yeah. And he can also deny the permit if he feel, you know, so this, he's trying to go the cheapest route, is a 12-inch culvert at the bottom of a steep hill that has a lot of water coming down it that he knows needs, an 18-inch culvert, he can deny the permit.
Right.
And say that he denied it because he felt it was, the culvert was of insufficient size.
Right.
I'm, I'm completely comfortable giving him that, that judgment.
So, so I think, Tim, what I'm suggesting is, oh, and then we did get into some discussions about, you know, the negative 3% and, you know, should it be more? Should it be less? Should it be 20 feet? Should it be the distance? And it just seemed like we were getting way into the weeds there. And, um, it should be negative 3% and we don't get into the greater, lesser, or whatever. Just say, it should be 3%, the first 20 feet. And then, if there gets to be an issue where it, that doesn't make sense, he could certainly waive part of it. But at least it, it's something manageable that is not asking more questions rather than solving.
And the next, anything about the next 10 feet?
And then the, the grade for the next 10 feet, uh, we were thinking just leaving it at eight. The difference between seven and eight is insignificant.
Hard to measure in the field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For 10 feet, yeah. So, if we kept that first paragraph six in bold, the only change I would.
Here, I can bring that up.
I would make is on the last sentence. Number six. And so, I would just change that to say, the object of the standard, of this standard, is to prevent stormwater damage to the town road from the proposed accessway.
Yep.
Do we have that?
Well, the, the sandwich, the, the language in there is a little bit, I think it's kind of funky the way it's written right now.
They wanna change the to this.
Yep.
The to this.
No, no.
Wrong one.
No, no. The, the.
The standard. This standard.
Is to prevent damage from.
Is.
Prevent stormwater.
Stormwater damage to the town road from the insert proposed accessway.
Damage to the town road.
Right.
On the proposed accessway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just wondering what people think of that.
It goes fine and take away.
So then we won't have the sentence about placement length and diameter should be determined by the road agent?
Um, that is gonna go into number eight.
Well, diameter should be taken out, so just placement.
Well, no, we're gonna leave it cause he's gonna approve it, but he's not, he's not determining it. There's a fine line there.
Right.
Well, this says placement, length and diameter of the culvert shall be determined by the road agent.
Yeah, we're saying, I'm, I'm changing, shall be approved by the road agent.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Placement, length and diameter.
Shall be approved by the road agent. So, that's the last sentence? Or you said eight instead?
That's the last sentence.
Typing as a spectator spot.
Yeah, well, you can't, we'll never get it right the first time.
Also, I doubt you all typically type with your hands all the way out like this.
I hunt and pick anyway, so I've, you would think after 30 years of working with computers, I would type a lot better than I do.
Maybe speaking, there you go. It was interesting, culverts have to be plastic now.
What?
That's what it said on the application. If that's just because metal ones rust out after.
Yep, and concrete ones deteriorate.
What are the plastic ones leaching?
The plastic ones, I think, are cheaper.
But they also have to be installed differently than metal ones.
They float.
Well, they are, um, they rely, the plastic ones don't have as much resistance to compression as the metal ones. So, what you have to do is on either side, you have to compact the soil as you go along, build it up. And then, what happens is when the pipe compresses, it pushes against that compacted soil and it can't. But if you don't compact that soil, you will crush the.
Smoosh flat.
Yep.
And then, you don't have the diameter which you thought you had.
No.
So, the, um, application also has different numbers than what I hear.
Yeah, once we get the, this done, I will rewrite the application and get that.
Just making sure everybody's connecting the dots.
Yep.
So.
I just didn't wanna keep changing until we get the language all set.
So, are we, are we all okay with this?
Friends are okay, I'm sorry.
Is Scotty okay? Yeah, I think he is. We could certainly give it back to him with the final edits, but.
Yeah, I think the only thing he doesn't really know about probably is this whole thing we're talking about where he can't specify, you know, I don't know if I have to explain that to him.
I'm happy to do that if you guys want me to.
That'd be great, dude, I mean, will he, yeah, is your.
Just, you know, kind of framing it in that this protects the town, kind of line.
Right, cause in the past.
Not that he's not able to do that.
When he and I have done the driveways, he just writes in there, you know, the diameter of the culvert, it's all done.
Well, he's, you know, if he understands that it's protecting him and the town from future suits, then I think he's gonna be fine with it. And, and the fact that he can deny the permit.
Right, and he still has the same, he can still say what he thinks the size should be.
Yeah.
He could either listen to him or not. And he can deny it if he wants to.
Yeah, when they come back and say, well, I wanna put three, four-inch pipes in, that's the same as a 12-inch.
Right.
Good, so, what do, what do we need to do with this next, David? You, you've got, there's the application, so you're gonna just revise that?
Yeah, I'll revise the application, I'll revise this, send it back out to everyone.
Okay.
And then, we'll schedule a public hearing.
Oh.
And have to have a public hearing, you noticed, public hearing.
Okay.
And Scott will probably be the only person showing up. But, but then, the board wants the, the public hearing, you can adopt. At, at the end of the public hearing, once it's closed, you would go to adopt the, the new.
Okay.
Regulations.
And you'll, you'll leave this in bold so that Scott and everybody at the public hearing knows what we've changed?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, David, when it's all done, we'll just get new copies for Scott and me and, you know, the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then we'll get rid of the old three, yeah.
Yeah, there aren't that many, you know, I'll, I'll put it up on the website.
Yeah.
It's the most important.
So, this is cool. We will have revised this 20 years after it was adopted.
Yeah.
God, we are doing great business here.
Revolutionary.
Master Plan Housing Chapter Discussions.
I sent out, um, this evening, um, Rich's summary and Nat's summary.
Yep.
And then, did everybody get my summaries for Renee Thiol of Linksonopee from last time? And then, Tim had done the Donna Richards comments. So, um.
Cause I wanted to stay.
Oh, here, I'll.
There were people to go.
I actually have an extra copy somewhere.
Yeah, did you get, um, when I passed on, or, no, you may not have been here last week.
No, I wasn't here since.
Ah, I wasn't here, but I thought, I was, I thought I had an extra copy. Oh, here we go. So, should we just kinda go through them in the order that they presented? I think Renee was the first one. Is that right? October 10th. So, I had put these in bullet form and Tim also did that and Nat's are sort of in bullet form with an narrative. Any, any additions, subtractions? Corrections?
Um, all these things look, um, look correct. Like, didn't we ask for, like, what other towns are doing?
Um, we may have.
And. That was the only other thing that I thought that.
I kinda, I reviewed the whole tape and that didn't.
It didn't come out.
That didn't come out, at least, or when I was reviewing it, it didn't come out.
Yep, yep, okay, let's go to have all of these demographics here.
So, this doesn't mean that we can't come back.
Yeah, yeah, you have the.
If people wanna take another look at it, certainly.
No, no, I know, no, you do have the Wilmot thing in, cause that was like what we, um, I think that was brought up as a way of what some other town, our size, is doing.
Yes, and I can't.
So, you do have, it's 15 eighths, you put it in.
I, I don't have a sense as to what, what that is, what, what Wilmot is doing.
Uh, well, conservation subdivision ordinance allows, like, smaller lot sizes for the homes and, um, you know, the econom, or the environmentally significant lands would be jointly owned or given to a land trust or something like that.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Isn't that kind of what they did up on the Culver Hill Lane? There's conservation, shared conservation land up on the top there, isn't there?
Where?
Where Nat, where Nat lives.
Yeah, I think, I know, um, I heard out on Grafton Turnpike with the little subdivision there.
Trolley subdivision.
Trolley subdivision. There is a big lot that is jointly owned by all of the property owners out behind all the lots.
Record Ridge had done the same thing.
Right, and I, I think you're right that Culver Hill, yes, Culver Hill is the second, is the lower down and Clover Hill is, is higher.
Yeah.
And that subdivision does in fact have a whole bunch of conservation land.
Yeah, I think so, Rich, when Rusty Estes was doing that.
Yeah.
We specified, yeah, I'm paying reparations. So, Ricky, you were there too?
I was there too, yeah.
We had, we specified that he had to put certain land in, protect certain land. And we gave, he had so many lots and the rest of it had to be, but I don't know how that works exactly.
Well, that, that was a negotiation. And I think that Trolley subdivision was a, you know, you know, somebody, you know, the developer saying, I'm gonna give the town this conservation land, even though it's got no development value anyway, or, I mean, it does have natural resource value, but it's for habitat, but that's about it. So, this conservation subdivision would actually specify kind of a formula. You know, how small could the lots get and what's the percentage or, you know, something about which land is conserved.
Like Record Ridge Farm, that's what the houses up in there, they all aren't, share that 40-acre field down in front, right off East Stepford Road.
But I think, well, Limehill Valley Association did that. I believe the land is with the Upper By Land Trust. I think they hold the easement.
Is, is that not what a conservation subdivision kind of does, you then?
Well, some of them are just, aren't held by an organization like that, they're just held by the town, which.
Could be, or, but could be held by a conservation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that, yeah.
So, um, or, you're not disagreeing with me?
No.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know that that followed any specific formula, like that was.
Well, that was probably before there was zoning too, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I think it was like, like, late eighties.
Yeah, well, see, what Limehill Valley did was they bought land and then they divided it up into X number of lots to get their money back. But then, they restrict that, that was the only, the total number of lots that could be there. In other words, that was it, it couldn't ever be subdivided again. So, however they did that, yeah, I think, yeah, maybe Upper By Land Trust holds the easement and they just, so nothing can be subdivided again.
I thought from the Tostasins that they actually owned an interest in the land, but maybe not.
Yeah.
I think they own, I think, yeah, the land may be jointly owned by the owners of all the property in the subdivision, but the Upper By Land Trust holds the easement.
Right, that could, that could be the way it is, yeah.
So, the question I have is, how is that different from what's on the books in line today? When Lockwood and Lutz came in here and they wanted to do.
With lot averaging?
Was that tied into lot size averaging? And so, if that happens, then 70, the number 70% of the land that isn't used has to get put into some sort of an easement. Is that?
Right.
I think lot size averaging might have been involved.
Well, lot averaging though is all, is not done by easement. It's usually done just by, we had these zoning restrictions.
Right.
Which we don't do anymore. So, I don't know, now is it conserva, now do we require conservation easements?
I, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, yeah, I mean, we've got a lot averaging. I mean, it's, it's a way to allow density, I mean, it's the same amount of density, but it's, um, people who buy the property end up owning the less, which presumably would be less expensive, but not really. If it's the parent lot that's being conserved, I mean, that cost gets passed along anyway. Anyway.
So, yeah, it's basically you, um, let's say you have, you allow four one-acre lots in five-acre zoning. So, you have basically 16 acres that you have reduced the lots' sizes by. So, you take 16 acres and set that aside and it would be under a zoning easement or a permanent conservation easement approved by the planning board. Or to the town, which.
And that, that was lot size averaging.
Yeah, that's lot size, page 39.
Yep.
So, David, who, who holds the easement?
It says, according to this, it's through a zoning easement, which would be something the town would monitor.
So, the, the town is the easement holder?
Yeah.
Well, yes, cause it's a zoning easement. A permanent conservation easement granted by, granted to. A permanent conservation easement granted by, granted to a conservation organization, which would be up like the Upper Valley Land Trust.
Okay.
Right.
That's approved by the planning board or to the town of Lime.
Oh, okay.
That's what it says, so it would be a conservation easement.
Sure.
Right, and then the town would have to defend it in court, spend the money to defend it.
As the town would pull the.
To enforce easement or something.
To enforce the easement, yeah.
What, what is the advantage to doing that for a person developing the lots?
Well, in a situation, I remember like John weighing up on Culver Hill. He just wanted to create a small lot for his son and not cut up the land. So he was able to pass on a smaller piece of property to his son. And I remember the, some of the frontage was restricted from, you know, using this zoning easement. And, yeah.
So, so would be a modification to this to encourage it might be to allow more houses, more lots than would normally be. Because at the moment, it's like you have fifteen acres, you could do three, five acre lots. Or you could do three one acre lots and, and give twelve acres to an easement. But if you.
Right, you get smaller and smaller.
Right, but, but what if you could instead do four instead of three?
You know, lot size averaging is different on the concert, than a conservation subdivision, because there's got to be some conservation value to the land that's set aside. And so it's not just annual property gets, you know, gets not developed.
Yeah, in other words, it could be the side of a hill that you couldn't develop anyway.
Um, it might have conservation value. I mean, so say it's a denning site or something, so it has to have like bona fide conservation value, not just be.
Do you think there's any property in the town of Lime that doesn't have conservation value?
Uh, probably, but.
I don't, at least under the tax rules, it seems unlikely to be that there is.
Brett Ryan's sand pit.
I'm not sure that the soccer field across the, Kevin has a lot.
Right, yeah.
No, from a conservation easement perspective, it certainly does.
It's an old leach field.
Well, it's on gravel pit.
It's on gravel pit.
It's an old gravel pit, well, the gravel pit was further in, but there was a mobile home and an old well.
Oh, you're saying, yeah, the gravel pit is where the, the solar panel is and that, down where the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking about by Hawn's Cheese Strip.
Yeah. Near the old town dump.
It is, used to be called Dump Road.
So, shall we move on to the next?
Oh, yeah, 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 we kind of went down a route of all the.
Yeah.
Well, I think it increases our understanding of where the ledger points might be, so I'm happy we had the discussion.
So is the next one Sandwich, I think? Susan McLean from Cloud. That was October twenty-four. So he's got some bullet points and then he's got an narrative after that. I thought it was all, all good stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe he looked up some of this stuff, because I didn't recall the, this actual specific size of the ADUs, that they allow a thousand square foot ADU. This was on the third page in, or the second page of the.
Yeah, it says it was recommended to allow.
Yeah. So maybe they haven't gotten there yet, I don't know.
Yeah, because, yeah, maybe she was just saying that.
Well, they, they passed ten.
Ten ordinances.
Ten ordinances, I didn't look up the, I looked up the text at the time and I don't remember what they were, but there were ten specific things that were at town meeting last year.
Yeah.
They all passed.
So it's kind of interesting, I, I found it interesting, is I didn't pick up on it or don't recall, but they allow a thousand square feet or fifty percent of the footprint of the main dwelling, whichever is larger with a potential cap of fifteen hundred square feet. That's a pretty darn big footprint. A three thousand square foot footprint, I guess, is a pretty big footprint.
Well, it would be maximum, maximum of fifteen hundred.
Well, they, they cap it at, at fifty percent or a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet.
Right. Oh, I see, so maybe it were three thousand.
If it was three thousand, that's how I'm reading this.
Right.
That's what I think it says.
Yes, three thousand's pretty large, but.
If it's a barn, I suppose.
Yeah.
Can you do ADUs on a barn?
Detached ADU?
I wouldn't recommend it. I, I, no, I'd recommend they do a conversion and then they don't have to limit their, their size.
Yeah.
So, Rich, you're saying three thousand square, you mean, the footprint is fifteen hundred?
The foot, the footprint of the main house would be three thousand feet in order to get an ADU of fifteen hundred square feet.
Right, right, right. But is that fifteen hundred square feet footprint or is that living space?
Well, right, I mean, we'd have to look at their language. But I think the intent there is to be more flexible and make it more attractive, I think. I mean, I'm a little concerned. Lime's ADU, detached ADU language allows a max of seven hundred and fifty square feet.
That's living space, I think.
Probably.
It is, yes, yeah.
So it's not footprint, it's not like seven fifty basement, seven fifty.
Right, let's say, you know, so if you put a single story house that has a footprint of seven hundred and fifty square feet, put a basement in with all your utilities, that's perfectly fine, because, you know, your basement is not counted as living space.
It's not living space.
If you, well, as long as you're not putting in like a bedroom downstairs, you know, then. But if, if you're using it as a utility area.
Right.
So that seems like a slippery slope.
Well, base, you have to have egress from the basement for a bedroom zone.
Yeah, but that's easy, you just do one of those step windows.
But again, I have to do a permit for it and if you come to me for a permit to put a, a extra bedroom in your basement and I know that it's an ADU, I'm going to say no.
So does that ever get tracked down at the time of sale? When the realtor is listing it or, or, or comes back to.
People who have cheated on it?
People who have converted their basements or would convert their basement and they.
Well, it would get caught next time the tax assessor goes through.
But then what happens?
Nobody, nobody lets them in, so.
Yeah. Again, it's one of those things that, you know, we try to catch what we can and the other, you know, just, you know, I can't go knocking on every door and, you know.
But if, if it went, was to be sold and, and listed, not just a private sale. Private sale would completely bypass it.
Right.
But a, a listing sale would have to be permitted.
But if they're putting in a new bedroom, then they have to get a building from you.
Right. And most likely increase the septic size.
I'm in the woods, are you going to notice?
Don't do that.
And a garage doesn't count towards living space, does it?
No.
Okay.
So an ADU can have a garage?
Yes.
Wow. Really going down a road.
Yeah, attached, yeah, attached to the ADU.
So, any comments on, I picked up just a few little, you know, typos, but I thought Nat's stuff was great.
Well, I think that what that brings up is the question as to whether or not we would want to hire, do a process like that and hire somebody, so that is just like an outstanding question.
Do we intend to solicit community input before we? The, the thing that troubles me a little bit about, about some of this is that I think there's a sense on this board that we ought to expand housing. And maybe we ought to, but, and I'm sure all of us individually have views about whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it seems to me that our job as, as a committee here is not to express our views in, in proposed changes, but rather to reflect the views of the community. And I, I mean, it's interesting to see what these other towns have done, what they, how they felt and what they've decided, but it seems to me at least that before we head, head in one direction or another, that there ought to be some, you know, a survey or some sort of, a, a vote at town meeting or, or a, a public hearing, something where we, where it's not just us deciding what to do, but rather it's the community.
I think that's why we had the public, these things were all public and the people who came were very interested in a lot of this. And I think that time after time, the point has been made that you have to have community involvement, engagement.
Yeah, but these, but these hearings haven't solicited public input in.
No, I mean, we're still at the information gathering stage and, and that key point is you have to have strong involvement of the community.
I, I think there are two ways of going about that. Is you can go out and say, tell us what you think. And, you know, you know, people give you every opinion they have. Or you can do a proposal and send that out to the public and say, what do you think of this? And solicit input. And then you have, you're, you're going to direct that input on what you have proposed, not, you're not going to get input or as much input that kind of goes off in all directions.
Yeah, but here, to begin with, there's sort of a binary choice.
Yep.
It'd just be nice to have some kind of direction.
Direction to go yes or no.
I, I, I know, there are a couple people I know of in the town of Lime who, if you ask them, would say, I don't think we should have any more housing, I like the town just the way it is.
Right.
I, I suspect that's a minority view, but I don't know, and I don't.
There's a lot of push, in the valley, there's a lot of push back down in Vermont about that. You know, same thing, a lot of people are saying in these towns in Vermont, well, we don't want any, we don't want all this stuff.
I think, I think when we get to that stage, I think what we're probably going to want to do is be very concrete about maybe telling the Sandwich story of a town that's similar to us and this is how they went about dealing with these different issues. And this is a scenario that we thought was thinking about for Lime and we want to hear what others think about that. I mean, I think this, we need this in order to be concrete about the ideas that go out. Because otherwise, if you say, tell us what you think.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with you, I, I think.
Yeah.
I think the devil is also going to be in the details, I mean, in terms of, yeah, sure, but, and, and what kind, do we want growth, first of all, and then what kind of growth do we want, defending?
I'm all for concrete, but I don't want to ask the question about, I don't want to ask the question in a form that's like, do you think we ought to double in size or triple in size?
Oh, no, no.
You know, I think we ought to give people the ability to sort of, if, if there are people who, if, if there's a majority of people who feel like, I, I don't want to see Lime grow, the reason I like living here is because it's the way it is and I don't want, you know, I don't want expanded, greatly expanded housing supply. We, we ought to know that before we dive into this stuff too deeply.
Right.
So, so you're thinking of a survey, I mean, come up with some kind of.
I don't know like what we did with the solar or, I, there's a bunch of ways you could get community input, I guess. I mean, it's probably too late for town meeting to, to, to raise this as a discussion point. But, but certainly we could do a survey or we could have a hearing where we say we're, we want to get, you know, the planning board is considering making changes to our, our zoning rules that would facilitate growth in the housing supply and we want to get town input before we pursue this and make sure that this is something that town, I, I don't have a stake in how we do it, but we got to do something.
Yeah, I think that the problem with a hearing is you, you don't get that many people, so you don't really get a, you know, I mean, a survey is the only way to get a lot of input, I think.
I think we have to be very clear though, none of us want to change the character of the town, really. Well, I think what I've gotten time and again is we're talking about infill and small modifications to allow modest expansion within the spirit of the town itself. We're not talking about putting a five hundred unit apartment complex down on East Stepford Road.
So I'm going to offer a couple concrete thoughts. One, I think it is important to involve the town, get feedback from the town. I don't think that's a particularly strong point of this board. I mean, when I think about when we did the solar array survey, it took us months to put that together. And then the results started coming back and it's like, boy, I wish I'd asked this question better. And so, I'm going to suggest, maybe we should talk, think about engaging a consultant to do some of this work. Give them a definite, a, a, a charge to say, we want to attract attention. I'd like you to help with our publicity to get people to come to offer this. I think the other thing we could say is, we don't want to change the character of the town. What options are there that other towns have used successfully to say, oh yeah, you know, infill is spectacular, has its drawbacks, it has its hurdles. Are there other things to be done? And give people concrete proposals, maybe even saying, well, what about Wilmot? You know, if you, if you drove down to Wilmot Main Street, you, this, this is a way of doing things. There's, you know, there's other things to offer concrete proposals. We'd have to spend money, but I think it would happen a lot faster. I think, I think we would get a better result from it because these guys, these, these professionals think about this all the time. And, you know, for all the failings of the consultants that we got for the Lime Community Development Committee, they did a really good job of pulling, pulling up a campaign together to get people to come, offer the opinion, to talk about it. And so, I think that's a, that's an interesting idea. I don't know what it would cost, I don't know who we talked to, but, I mean, well, Sandwich, Midsen, Barrett, that was spectacular.
Yeah, and they had, they got one of those.
You got a HOPE grant.
HOPE grants.
And, you know, maybe.
Who knows where the grant funding stands at this point? We know where the federal stuff is.
I'm sure there's no problem with grant funding today. But, you know, I mean, we could talk to them and say, you know, I don't, I don't know, Dave, I don't know, could we scare up two thousand bucks to have somebody do something?
You're not going to get anything for two thousand.
It would be at least thirty, forty.
We can't even do the mailing for two thousand, so.
I mean.
Literally, the, it cost me a thousand to do the, the survey mailing.
Right.
Okay.
Sandwich got thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just saying that number, but, and. We don't have a spare thirty grand in the budget right now. I, no, I know that, I'm very aware of that, yeah.
I'm not even sure that people would support that.
Support.
Thirty thousand dollars for a study like that.
So, yeah, before I went out and got a thirty thousand dollar grant for something, I mean, I, I think it is absolutely interesting to say what, what does the town think?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if we were to get free money, that's one thing, but I don't think an appropriation's going to happen.
Oh, no, I don't, I wouldn't think so. Sometimes in my experience, consultants can be great and they can really help you, but that has not been my universal experience.
Oh, then they come in and then you do all the work and they run it up.
Well, and beyond that, people get automatically offended by outside people suggesting what should be done in our community. And so it, it really goes both ways.
Well, I'm not, in this, in this initial question, I'm not specifically asking them to make recommendations. I'm asking them to tell about things because of their knowledge of the, of the environment and the various towns.
Well, they come from Massachusetts, Barrett.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not pumping for Barrett, I'm just saying, somebody that's, that knows.
Well, the Regional Planning Commission knows, the local communities. Well, the Regional Planning Commission knows, the local communities, and if we wanted to have somebody else tell us what other people are doing, they're the people
Can, I that's half of it. The other half is can they can they run a marketing campaign to get people to come to this this meeting? That's.
Unless they're giving away food or money, I doubt it. So it's us talking to our neighbors.
Cookies, but, you know, but well, but the LCDC had a big turnout. There were sixteen H P.
Well, what was being proposed? Rezoning Route Ten for commercial. I mean, that was that was the impetus for that group getting together and then getting going into study.
Oh, that's not at all what I thought it was, but that's.
Well, that's what I I remember.
That um that group put together a nice marketing campaign, posters, messages that went out. And we didn't have to do the work. I mean, that was that was an attractive aspect of it.
Who was the LCDC?
Oh, Lyme Community Development Committee.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, I and those consultants spewed back exactly what I told them.
That's what I'm saying. You they come in, you do the work.
They spewed back at all the information that they asked me and I gave them.
Well, the the thing that the one thing that I, well, an element of what Rich said that to which I'm sympathetic is that when we formulated our questions for the solar and then got responses, in retrospect, it seemed to me that in some ways our questions weren't artfully formulated. And so maybe somebody who has expertise in this stuff might be able to help us. If if we decide to do a survey, maybe there's a way to get some guidance or something.
Specific to a survey.
Well, we have survey researchers, John Campbell and Kathy Scher do that. I mean, that was their their thing. They're retired now.
Kathy's husband.
Yeah, John, yeah, Campbell.
So in lieu of hiring a consultant, though, maybe we could, we could have some of you like that and say, would you would you be willing to, we're we're gonna take a stab at drafting some questions to get community input on this issue. Would you be willing to look it over and give us your thoughts and suggestions?
We could also see if other towns have done this. I bet. Are there any surveys that are out there?
Well, what do we wanna ask? I mean, that's the whole other thing.
But but you see, I I'm not just talking about the specifics of the question, it's the form of the question. If you can have a question that gets the answer that you want, if you can clone that and ask a different question, make sure that you can code it and the language is parallel to tap into the same, that's what I'm saying.
I see.
We got into trouble, I think, a little bit on our solar survey with formats of questions that people then blew out the edges, cause they didn't like it, they wanted to answer different, give us different answers.
Well, I'm sure that the Housing Opportunity Grant towns, if they did survey work, that all those are available for review and right.
Yeah, I think I think one of the problems with the solar survey was we didn't, it's my opinion, was we didn't give enough information.
It was very hard.
Because people didn't have the background.
Cause we're just one page.
They didn't know, well, they didn't, they didn't have the answer because they didn't have any.
Beautiful. I mean, we we have somebody who can do that.
I can format things, but it's very hard to develop the knowledge needed to answer questions intelligently.
Well, that's what I mean, they didn't have any background for the question. They didn't know what, you know, what.
But you can't make people get invested in these things.
No, but I mean, in the survey, you can put that in the question. You can say, this will this will happen, this this will be.
Well, the other page I thought was informative, that we people weren't cold, you know, it wasn't a cold call, they were the other page.
Right.
So we did get some.
Well, some, but I think there was a lot of.
Just out of curiosity, have we had any increase in solar applications or decrease?
Yeah, and that's.
Oh, interesting. Do you think it's regulatorily driven or is it just nobody wants to do it this week?
I think the all the early adopters have bought into it.
Well, if you have community power, it's, you know, it's it's a lot of like ten dollars a a month increase to get to a fifteen or twenty five thousand dollar system. So you might as well just buy green power.
I mean, that's, you know, I'm in Vermont, but my last electric bill was a hundred and sixty dollars. And I'm running grow lights downstairs in my basement and so they're taking on a lot of power. But at a hundred and sixty dollars a month at max, it's gonna take me a lot of years to recoup a it's gonna be about a twenty five thousand dollar investment for me to put solar at my house.
Right.
And I I just can't get the the numbers to work out.
They don't work out.
Yeah.
One of the two systems that I knew weren't gonna work out, but there weren't options, you know, when ten years ago, fifteen years ago.
My sister lives in DC, they have huge incentives down there and they put in a fifty thousand dollar system on their roof with a three year payback on it.
How many?
Three years.
How do they do it?
Subsidy.
Subsidies.
No, you may have income tax checks you write.
Well, no, this is this is DC.
No, it's the power company.
The power companies are, they want to have solar in DC, there's, you know, tons of roofs there.
It's cheaper to develop solar than it is to develop a power plant.
Right.
And so they're they're huge incentives. They get about a four hundred dollar a month check back from the power company.
Cool, that's great. Wow.
So they still have to put the fifty thousand out.
Yep.
You gotta pay that.
Yeah, they they borrowed the money. They actually had a friend who said, hey, I'll I'll lend it to you at whatever the prime rate is or when we sign the the deal and you know, it's a three year payback on a fifty thousand dollar loan.
And then.
But it's worth it.
I think the rest of the combined cash is free money.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we went down the rabbit hole again. We only got through, you know, two, so we get on to.
Yeah, what was the the third one?
Jonah?
Jonah, yeah.
Jonah.
Jonah.
Jonah, Jonah. Yeah, I just, I went through the the video and I just tried to pick out important things that he said.
And these were, these were really good points, Tim.
Yeah, well, Jonah's interesting, and he's, I mean, he's doing it, you know. Well, of course, his and his thing, he says, well, the zoning's not the problem, it's just you need somebody that wants to do it and has the money, get the money, basically. Of course, he's in Vermont and in a in a perfect situation because Fairleigh has a lot of rundown, you know, fairly inexpensive buildings that he can buy and redo and do it.
Well, he's also, you know, the, he's using family property in Fairleigh. Yeah.
I think I think he bought a lot, a couple of lots, though.
Yeah.
But.
Well, family bought.
In fact, Tim, he did say that zoning limitations, the minimum lot sizes and setbacks are important factors. So, I mean, you know, zoning, I think, is a is a concern. I I know he his blog years and years ago was, he was arm wrestling with the zoning board because the eaves on his building were a foot too wide or some horrible thing and
Yeah.
and that they were saying, well, you can't do it then. It's like, what are you talking about? I'm trying to spend my own money to make the town better. So but I think that this is a good summary.
I think, I don't know whether he said it in this or maybe it was in his blog, but he did he did say say that the lack of zoning has not, in Orford, has not
Oh, that's right.
increased the stock of housing
Right.
in Orford, which is most definitely in the Dartmouth Hannover housing market area, so.
What is the scope of Orford?
Well, one one thing about Orford is just, nobody wants to get their kids there for school. So that's, you know, the opposite of law.
Send my kid through that school, I don't blame them at all.
Yeah.
So that's a huge factor in Orford, just that nobody's moving in there with kids, so it's very.
There's plenty of people who live in Lyme, though, who don't make, even with kids, who don't, you know, who use crossroads or other it it isn't the case that everyone with kids in Lyme uses the Lyme schools.
Right.
Maybe in high school more, maybe the ability to opt into Hannover High.
Right. But.
And does the town still pay tuition to St. Johnsbury Academy and stuff?
Oh, yeah. Not to Bergman.
So.
The ski school?
Had a, or Michaela Shifflin's parents were really mad at the town because they didn't pay for a center there. But, yeah, Orford is just so interesting, cause I mean, we pay taxes in both towns. I used to live in Orford for seven years, so I know a lot of people there. But it's just an interesting, it's sort of the opposite of Lyme. So, well, as far as their whole outlook, you know, no zoning whatsoever. But actually, there is a proposal right there, when you come into town, sort of just past the fire station on the left, there's that building that used to be the church and now
Oh, yeah.
I think Martha Di Valdi Stone.
Had greeting cards and things.
Yeah, in that field right there, they're proposing fourteen units. They're gonna, somebody wants to build fourteen units right there.
The best thing they could do is turn the old high school into housing.
Yeah.
Be great senior housing.
Absolutely. I think they looked at that.
Yeah, they did, Carl Smith, right, with thin pines.
I understood there was some concern that they might they might not like the people that moved into into that or something.
Well, I don't know.
Well, I think what happened.
One resident told me, they were shot down because the type of people that are gonna live here are not the kind of people we want in Orford.
Correct.
No, no, it wasn't senior housing, it was, it was for.
You know, the people that had the high speed chase on Archer Town Road today.
There was.
Yeah. Eighty-five miles an hour max.
That's all recently redone.
Wait, what were you saying?
There was a high speed chase through Orford today.
In the snow?
Yeah. They got away. They they got to Bridge Street there and got into Vermont and got away.
Really? Who was who was chasing?
Uh, well, it started in Wentworth, so as Wentworth
Jeez.
Tony Sweat went up, the Orford chief, the Piermont chief.
Jeez, and they still got away.
They still got away.
The truck was terrible today.
And no nobody told their police cruisers or anything like that?
No, I believe the truck that did hit somebody else on Archer Town Road, but.
Great.
So let's let's keep moving, not go down the rabbit holes here. So we have that one and then I think Rich's may have been in a little different format.
I apologize, I said I sent this so late, but. Yeah, I didn't get a chance to read it. Yeah. And you could take a minute to read it or you might could. I have copies if anybody wants.
So this was just in your, in the body of your email, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, of course, the Orford case here. There is no zoning.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
Now, Orford does have some, they have a floodplain ordinance.
Yeah, sure. And and I'm sure there's a bunch of it that's in a floodplain, and so, I mean, that's.
Twenty-five, as you go up.
Orford Bill's, Orford Bill's got a lot of flood.
That's all, all those houses are built on floodplains.
Interesting, okay.
Cause that little creek right there that runs along.
Yeah, that floods periodically and floods those houses up.
That would, wouldn't it?
No.
Well, washed out the road.
So.
Right, I remember that, was it?
Yeah, it wasn't that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess some of the comments, I guess I have in in these.
So you actually editorialized quite a bit in your write up.
I was gonna say, it's more editorial than.
It's like what you get from what they said.
Right. And I still think that that's a
Well, those are Rich's ideas that come out of.
Those weren't with the speaker's ideas.
They did not say that, it seems, yeah.
I could come back to 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 provide a more point by point description of certainly what certainly what Jamie talked about was, there's a lot of discussion of, you know, what's the price point on on units and all. And I think that's interesting. But it's not anything that the planning board has any control over. And so you know, I'd like to I think it I think it's fair for us to lament the difficulties of building housing, high costs of everything. Are there things that we can do? And I think what I'm hearing today is people are saying, maybe, but let's find out what the town wants to do. And so, you know, you I don't think anybody will be surprised by some of the editorializing that I've done here, but how can we ask the town what we want? Do we want to engage somebody to help us write something? Do we wanna go?
Well, I think we need to, this is now four or five statements of fact, essentially.
Right.
We need, we need to turn this into a story. A narrative of some kind that kind of pulls the common threads, which I think we can see quite clearly, there's some some common threads.
Yeah, we can either do that or we can just state the facts and 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 leave it there and and then as a group decide where we're gonna go next, but
You know, one of this is problem statement and then some of it's case study. So that's essentially what I see. And the suggestions that planning board members have from what they heard is something else.
That's gotta be left off at the beginning.
Right.
Sure.
It doesn't need to get dragged.
Personally, I'd rather see us come up with a statement of facts of what we learned, not have the editorializing. You know, put this aside so that we we know we did this, we can go back and you don't have to go looking at the tapes, we can read this and
Right.
others who missed some of this can can look at this and say, well, these are kind of the bullet points of what the speakers talked about. But then, yes, we do need to figure out where we, where and how we go next to to get to get input from the town to and also decide whether we're, how we're gonna shape that. I mean, I suspect that doing nothing and just allowing organic growth would probably be good with a lot of people.
Well, there hasn't been any, that's part of the problem.
Well, Brett Ryan has done organic growth, I would say.
And we've had, well, a few new houses in Lyme recently.
Not according to the state.
Well, go driver in.
I was just saying how many building permits have been in the last five years.
Okay, well, on my, I have, I have, in my neighborhood, there have been four new homes. You know, the cash market, the house that went with that, I mean, those all got totally renovated, sold. I've got.
But that's, those were houses that was residentially formed.
It was on an, I mean, they were vacant for a while, cause they couldn't take care of them, but they got fixed up and and then I, the McLaughlin above my house, and then there's that other one from those people from Connecticut. So, you know.
There's one on the river, there's one down the river, too.
It's one right back up here.
Yeah. There's.
Well, I'm I'm just saying, you know, on the place where I I kind of walk, you know, five minute walk from my house, there's four. So I I know that, and that's in ten years.
Well, just last year, there were two. Well, just last year, there were two ADUs, you know, just in a mile from our houses.
Bolins and which ones was the other one?
Um, the one opposite. Whipple, or Washburn Hill, I think.
Is that that green?
Oh, Lopez.
Yeah, Lopez has one. Brett Ryan did one at his, um, where the garage used to be. There's an A D U in there.
Where did it squatter used to be?
Uh, I'm trying to think of the.
Maxfield's.
Maxfield's, thank you.
Well, that, that was, that's commercial.
Five years.
Well, downstairs now is a residence.
And he has an A D U at seven hundred fifty-four foot eight.
Seven hundred building.
And then I'm working on one right now on Christine Brown's property.
Where's that?
Route ten and Washburn.
Matt Brown's mother.
Matt Brown's mother, Baltimore Washburn Hill on Route ten on the north side.
Old, old, really old Cape with, with plastic around the foundation?
Yeah. David, who's, who's playing that new house on the river beyond the East Central Bridge away, it's like a quarter ways down there on the right? It's been going on for a while. It's a new house.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It used to be a garage or something. Um, it's south of the corner. So it's, it's River Road South, and it's on the east side of the road. And it's, it was a structure that was there, and then you saw, like, on the siding that they, you know, spray painted where the windows were gonna go, and, um, and the guys started working on it at the end of the summer.
I just bring that back.
There's one on the riverside, too, west side, new house.
At the bottom of, you know, Maple, yep, and then River Road, there was a, there's a couple, there was a brick house there that got torn down and replaced. And there was a mobile home that was.
Uh, they had the brick house, that's, um.
See, it's not creating new if we're placing.
But beyond that, another mile or two, there's a new house on the river.
On the north side?
On the west side, on the riverside.
But north or south?
South, south of Maple?
Yeah, like another mile or so down there, at the east. There's a new house being built.
So annoying.
Yeah, pretty positive. Anyway, next time I'm down there, I'll look.
Yeah, you can add it to.
Maybe they forgot to get it delivered.
No, probably not, but I'm just trying to think.
Anyway, I'll look again.
Oh, yeah, be that as a man, I mean, yeah, there, there is some growth. I mean, David's got the, the statistics.
The, the thing is, what, it, it's, you know, it's like tear down and replace in, in several instances, though, so it's not creating.
Well, I've got two of your, my own.
You have to, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's good. I'm, I'm glad, but it, but there.
Yeah, and I think.
But it's not, it's, there's no diversity in the housing. It's all expensive stuff.
Well, that's how organ, I don't know. I mean, I just look at what was done. It was really expensive, the cash market and the one next to it because of the nature of the owner and, you know, what needed to be done. I mean, those, those places, I mean, I looked at that because I, you know, thought it'd be a great place for my aunt to live up the street from me, but it's like no septic. It was not, you know, that was expensive.
Postage, stamp size long.
Right, right. And then, but the other two houses, I mean, you know, they're brand new and they're really, really expensive, both of them.
Why do you think they're expensive?
Well, one of them is huge. I mean, these people said they wanted to downsize and, you know, they're yet smaller than the old house, the Hermitage, but it's, it's huge.
Oh, the Magaluf, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if they want to downsize, but they just wanted to.
Well, they've got three kids, and, you know, so, but that's a big house. And the other one is, is, they're kids in there, too. And, um, they're, they're both really big.
And one that just up here, um, Spring Hill, not Spring Hill, whatever, the, the private road there.
The Creamery Road?
No, Creamery's or this one, it's this one right up.
Yeah, that's where the Pester layers used to live up there.
Spring Hill or Rocky?
It's not, no, I think it's Spring Hill, because Rocky.
Yeah, Spring Hill.
Um, there's one, like, if you stand in the parking lot, you can see it.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, that was half million dollars. It's just a, a box.
Well, half million dollars is, is not that expensive.
What Rusty, what Rusty put in is half million dollars, you know.
Was really.
Manufactured housing. By the time it got done there.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Next to their, uh, S T's in Yalap offices?
No, right, right across the street, over here.
The Rusty Keiths?
Yes, Rusty Keith.
Oh, I think Rusty.
Yeah, Rusty Keith.
Why didn't that house get oriented the way it is?
Because he's intending to put some more on that lot, and so he has an orientation for everything for his eventual plans.
He wasn't a builder. I think we asked him that when he came in. It had to do with setbacks or something.
Setbacks and making one for a shared leach field.
That's right.
Yeah, he'd like to buy that other piece, but.
Well, it just seems like you could have oriented it toward the road, even, you know, even if you were.
Well, you see, you've got to keep the driveway as short as possible because it counts for a lot of coverage.
David, would you be able to give us a notion of how many new houses or whatever have been made in the last, I don't know, three years?
Didn't we give it?
You did it, you did it once, yeah.
Not long ago.
Yeah.
It might, it might be helpful to update it for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
It would be good, it would be good to understand which ones are actually new construction, which ones are, you know, re, refurbishing.
Well, I mean, there are those two, and then down on Preston, there's a new house, but not in the past ten years, but the past fifteen.
The horse barn?
No, not the horse barn, the one below that.
Yeah, but the modern.
Modern house. There's a.
Oh, yeah.
That's, might be, that's not that, that's, that's new. That's five years, I think.
Five years, okay, well, that's another one just.
It was an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar house when they built it. And then Steve Maker, right above, remodeled that.
And we're gonna permit now for one out. It's, it's one of the S T properties that has not had a house on it. It's the first loop. I never can remember the names of the railroads.
This is Culver Hill?
Might be Culver.
Culver Hill's the first one. Culver Hill's the same.
Yeah, the, the first one, yeah. It's gonna be out, I believe it's out that way. Basically out behind, um.
Kevin Sarr's, I work with Kevin.
Out near where Kevin Sarr, where Dave Russ did be out behind his new house. That's a new house.
David Russ built that new house, yeah.
Is that the guy up on the hill? You can see really easily now that the tornadoes?
Well, that, that, I think it was Kevin Sarr's house, or it might have been David.
It was David Russ.
Oh, it's David Russ's old house.
Russ's house.
His house is, sits down between the road and that one.
Then he built a new house.
Yeah, and then, then, then there's the one up.
But it'll be.
There was a container right there at the road.
Yeah, what was that about for so long?
Maybe just storing and.
Yeah, I know, but no, not everybody can have a container out there just, you know, just storing.
It's a very gray area in the zoning.
What's the scoop with lawn green heat? How are they allowed to be there?
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Huh.
Yeah.
They came in.
They came in and had houses.
Lawn green heat came in, though, after eighty-nine. It was a.
But it was still.
No, it's, it's been.
No, because his Morty Senior had a business there.
Yeah, he had a business running there since before zoning.
But it wasn't this massive thing.
No.
No.
So, um, let, let's see if we can come to some sort of conclusion on this. Rich, do, do you think you can make another stab at being more objective on what the.
Okay, yes.
Notes are, and then, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm kind of anxious to maybe just put this to bed and then for us to answer Dave's question. And, um, how, how are we going to come to some fruition and have a discussion that?
Here's me, should have my head examined. Do you want me to try to put it together in one document?
If you want your head examined, sure.
It's, it's, it's kind of an analysis, synthesis of the facts and try to find common themes.
So you go like this?
Yes.
And our purpose for putting this together is just to have a record of.
Just to have a record, yeah.
Or, and to have something to hand to people, you know, like, we did this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I kind of like them being separate document or separate speed, you know, what this speaker talked about, what this speaker talked about, like that. But if, if you wanted to try to make a.
They didn't talk about the same thing, so that, that would, I think, naturally happen, that you would have a section from this person and a section from this person. But then, if two people talked about the same thing, you could say, you could put those next to each other annotated with who it came from. So you would see.
That seems like a lot of work. I mean, it's work for you, but then it's gonna be work for us to discuss it and, and agree on it.
Well, it's nice to, I think, have a, have a record. And if it, if it sounds like one person is the author, that might make it more palatable to the readers, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I, the diversity is good because it comes from all different people on this board, but it might be a better record if it was.
I mean, we'd have these as the refer, you know, as documents. I just think it's sort of hard to read all these different pieces.
It is. It's, yeah, it's eight pages.
Yeah.
Well, they're, you know. I mean, why not?
Okay.
No, but, you know, and then I would, I would also like everyone to start thinking, well, what would we ask the town?
Yes, that's David's question, yes, yeah.
You're not pointing at Rich.
No.
No, what would we ask the town? And then if we got questions that we thought, we, you know, then we can always pass them on, hopefully to John and Kathy to take a look at to make sure we're not asking something that's gonna be answered in a way we don't want.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it seems like it would be interesting to see what, what communities that got HOP grants and did a survey. I don't know how we.
HOP grant surveys.
But I, I don't think that, you know.
And they may not apply to us. I mean.
I mean, I think what we want to ask is about general things. And remember, remember, we started this maybe three years ago, writing up some goals and strategies.
Yes.
And then wanting to give those to the people to say, is this an appropriate goal for a line? And, um, you know, that may not be a bad way. I mean, we did some work, I think there were five or six goals. And you might want to try to throw that.
I think that was perhaps before I was around.
No, no, you were here, you were here, yeah.
I'm not remembering.
This was like just a year ago or so.
You said it was.
It was probably more than that.
I think it's more, because we got involved in the solar.
But it was after the solar.
Was it?
That was solar, I, I want to say it was last summer.
Okay, well, I, I can, you know, and so I, I don't think, I mean, for us, you don't even remember, which is, that's good. You get rid of some fresh eyes.
We're all suffering from C R S. Can't remember anything.
So good, Brett.
I think that does go.
Oh, my gosh, it was twenty twenty-four, July fifth.
There you go.
Wasn't that far away?
Things away.
Yeah, so, I mean, we had, we had, yeah.
Right.
And we have, we have seven goals, so, you know. You know, so.
I get six of them.
Maybe we, maybe we, I mean, this might be not the most current version.
I, I mean.
No, that's April seventeenth, yeah. So I got July twenty-fifth. Yeah, well, anyway, that.
Oh, yes, I remember now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, and the strategies were there as, you know, mainly, and then we had some editorial stuff also. So, but the main thing is, is to try to get the, the, are these goals the ones that the town shares? And, um, and, you know, we've got to, like, what David said, we need to see what the, you know. If the town votes no on, you know, we get strong opposition, let's then forget that.
Right.
There's your, your new housing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, it's broken down into new dwellings and then.
Conversions.
Conversions, A D Us.
So it's conversions, tear downs, or?
No, conversions would be taking an existing building.
Oh, and putting multiple units in.
Yeah, putting units.
And the new dwellings, does that count tear downs, or is that?
No, that does not come tear downs.
Okay, so it's a net, net?
Yeah, increase.
Plus. And, and what about, um, what about just tear downs with no replacement?
I don't really track those in an easy way. I do, I consider it just a renovation.
No, no, I'm just going to, no replacements. So you tear it down and there's nothing there anymore.
Um, those I did not track. Well, I, I can track them. I don't have.
How would you count Rusty's place here where he tore down something and put a new thing in?
I would consider it just a renovation that it's a, it's the same size.
Well, no, but I'm wondering, like, is, are they really new?
It doesn't.
No, it would not show up on this.
Yeah, see, and that's probably a number we need to, to know about because we're not really increasing.
So could I ask you guys to do a little bit of work to get the goals and the, all the statements? And Rich, you update yours with facts, because if you want this done, and when is our next meeting?
Uh, next week, but the week after, in two weeks.
So do you want, do you want me to find the most recent draft that I have of that?
That would be very excellent.
Probably I have that on my computer somewhere, yeah.
And then I'll.
That's three or four years ago, guys. July twenty-four.
Well, it's all before.
I knew what happened at least.
The last month seems like about two years.
I'm sure if I look at it, I'll go, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So the next meeting is the eleventh of March.
Not the thirteenth?
No, that's.
Uh, no, I'm on the wrong, that's a Thursday. It's the thirteenth.
Yeah, unfortunately, they scheduled.
This is the school meeting?
No, they scheduled my, um, other eye on the March thirteenth.
You'll have to change your term.
And I didn't, I knew it was the thirteenth, and I just looked recently to see what day of the week it was. I don't know how they, anyway, I hit it again. I don't have any say, I don't have any say in that.
They have surgery days each.
Yeah, well, this is a long time ago, they said it, but I don't have any say in it, so.
That's okay. I don't think we're gonna make any firm decisions. So, and we can always send you the stuff, and you can send in your comments before the meeting.
All the developments shall occur on, what's the number of your house on River Road?
Right.
Well, this is all for sure.
I was gonna say that. Yeah, two, both my eyes are, were scheduled on two, wait, where is it?
Well, maybe that's the only day the guys.
It is. I mean, that's, that's what happens. They have a surgery day and then they do back-to-back-to-back cataracts.
So, so, uh, you're gonna, for, for that date, you're gonna try that, okay?
Okay, well, I'll send out what I have, but do you want me to abbreviate it just to be the goals, not the strategies and the?
Sure.
Extraneous, um.
Well.
Send me everything.
Say the whole thing.
Let's see the whole thing, but.
All right, but, okay, that's fine. We'll just update everybody with the whole thing.
But, but we may end up only using the goals.
We don't want to share all that other stuff with the people.
No, 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 no.
We just want to know, are we going in the right direction with these visions for the, for our housing chapter? We're not even saying for zoning, this is.
History is important, so getting, putting everything in context will be helpful as I'm working my way through. And I'm just gonna take all the pieces and try to.
Good. Sounds good.
Okay, um, so it's, it's eight thirty. We had one other item on the agenda, which I think we should probably hold off on at this point, which was to talk about zoning ordinance twenty twenty-six update, so I, I think that's another, another issue for another night.
There were so many rabbit holes in that field.
No, you know, what I, I, what I see.
It's a purry dog field.
In the upcoming year is that we should probably, if we're gonna make progress on both, we should probably do one housing meeting a month and one zoning meeting a month, because they both are big projects. And you never, you know, they're both good projects. And at some point, we're gonna just have to work on the zoning because we have the deadlines to, and have to ready for next time.
I like that idea of doing switching.
I think that would be great. So if you like one topic and you don't like the other, just don't come to the other.
So do you want me, you know, do housing for next meeting just to get your?
We have a little bit of momentum, yeah.
And then after that.
For the zoning.
The zoning.
I, I just think if we can have a shared understanding from this.
I, I like that. I like, good. Terrific. Well, anybody want to make a motion? We're adjourned.
So you got, I think I said you have a good time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you, did you make any serial? Yeah. Yeah?
No, I've got a couple.
I understand he used to live in Lyme for a number of years.
Oh, okay.
Jordan sweet today?
Oh, I hope so. That would be nice. It was great last time. Rich. And we are on, what do we have? Here we have Sue.
Sue and Jordan.
Uh, Jordan, she hangs in every meeting, so.
She's doing the minutes while you're yakking.
Oh.
Good for her.
I know.
Yeah, I like getting them a little ahead of time.
Yep, makes sense to me.
And the closer to when the meeting was, the clearer my memory is.
Exactly, me too. You know, she has that young brain, so she doesn't have that problem.
And I think it's more informative for the community than, than when we, um, try and just, you know, have you do twenty-seven things at one time.
Yes. That's true.
Good. Good, good, good.
Okay, I think we are approaching the witching hour.
No, I don't have a chimney either, but that's okay. I don't need one.
I don't, I can do one.
No, that's okay.
Because.
Do you have a copy?
I have a copy.
Oh, my gosh, you're great. Thank you.
Is it? It is. It's ten o'clock. And I will officially open the March fourth meeting of the Select Board. And we will begin with a public comment session. Sue, do you have a public comment for us?
I do. I had a recent experience with a stray cat.
Uh-huh.
You may have heard of Alyssa.
Yes.
And before I trapped it, I wanted to be sure I could take it to the Humane Society, so I called them. And they told me that because Lyme was not a subscriber, that they would not take any stray animals from Lyme.
You need to talk to Sean about that. He's the animal control person. And I think we may have a deal with, um, the Lyme vet now.
Well, that's.
But I'm not sure. You should ask Sean.
Because of that, I did go to Sean and they would, they take it to the, to the Lyme vet. And I went there the next day to pick up the trap. And was, they didn't know anything about it. So I talked to Nick Torino, and he eventually told me that they did take the animal to the, uh, uh, Humane Society. But I was just wondering, is, is there a subscription? Is there something we should be doing to make sure that, uh, they will take animals?
You need to talk to Sean.
Yeah, I.
It's a finance thing. And that's why he changed, so.
Well, if Lyme vet's not gonna take them, then we should, we should be doing something.
Well, we need to, maybe, maybe, yeah, personally, you should talk to Sean, but maybe we should have Sean put something on the list serve so that people know what to do with stray animals.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. I'm glad you were able to affect a, a capture and release.
I hope to rescue.
Yes, I hope so too.
The rest of us will know that when we call, uh, Humane Society to say we're from Hanover.
Yeah.
Yes. That's a good point.
Yes. Now that recording, you're gonna be in trouble.
As long as you don't do it, you'll be fine.
Okay.
I have, yeah, Jen Carter's there, and then I don't know who John is. I'd love to know who that is.
Hey, John, can you identify yourself?
John Bigelow.
Oh, hi, John. And did you have a comment for us?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Ms. Carter is here for a conversation we're having a little later, just listening.
Yeah.
Okay. And Rich, did you have something for us this morning?
I did. Couple, several months ago, there was a discussion about some sort of an RFP for the Lyme common. And I just wondered where that stands and.
Okay, thank you.
So an update would be great.
Okay, I've been wondering the same thing myself. So, um, just wanna make a quick note here about Sue and Lyme PD and et cetera, animals. And Phil, did you have something for us?
Just briefly, the library board last night elected Alex Boratlot to be the next chair. He's the fellow who stood up at town meetings, said that his mom was a librarian and he liked to serve. He's an associate director at the Black Museum of Art. Very, very nice fellow who doesn't just talk, he hears the sound of his voice and is very thoughtful. So this is potential future leadership in the town too.
Great.
What was his last name again?
Boratlot. I think it's French.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Very good.
Got somebody else?
That's Jacqueline Carter, by Carter.
She's on there twice.
She, no, Jen is one, Jacqueline is the other. They're two different ones.
Oh, so two J and J Carter.
Yeah.
Just say the name again.
B O R T O L O T. Boratlot.
And his first name?
Alex.
Uh, Alex, excuse me. Looking at John in front of me on the screen.
All right, very good. We have minutes to approve from February eighteenth. And what do we wish to do with that?
I'll move.
Okay, Ben and David, we noted a couple typo changes. Thank you very much, David. All those in favor of the minutes say aye. Judy, aye. Those are approved. And we have a manifest in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and four cents. What do we wish to do with this manifest?
Move it.
I'll say good.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ben. Any questions? Anything? None. All those in favor say aye. Judy, aye. Okay, so that's the manifest. Uh, Deana, we have a note here about a grant having been submitted to the Lyme Foundation concerning the R R F B. No word yet?
No word yet, but it's been sent in.
Okay, do we know when they meet next?
I don't know. I haven't heard. I'll ask Debbie. I find out.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
What is R R F B?
It's your flashing.
It's the crosswalk sign.
It's a ratted, ratted whatever.
Oh, yeah, I know.
The flashing sign.
Okay. And we have a corrective amendment to a conservation easement. Sixty-three Culver Hill Lane. Bless you.
Thank you.
And.
I kinda looked over these materials, and it was very hard for me to figure out what was changing. People don't send red lines.
No.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, the whole thing is confusing. That's why Laura was involved. Thank goodness. Yeah, the sixty-three Culver Hill is a property that was owned by a woman named, or is owned, Anne Griswold. This is the property that borders her property, that was part of Rusty Estes' development.
Subdivision up here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so this is the corrective, this is an amendment to a correction that should have been done back when that happened.
Okay.
So, and Laura has looked at it. And the Conservation Commission has looked at it. Even though they don't have to sign, Laura wants them to sign. The easement that is on Anne Griswold's property is Upper Valley Land Trust, but the easement on the Estes' property development is this.
Thank you. So, yeah, as near as I could tell from reading this, you can't tell exactly what's changed, but it seems to be a, a line that was.
It is.
incorrectly drawn.
Right.
So they're just moving a boundary line?
Yes, they're correcting.
If they gave you a red line, what I would see is just the meteors bounce description changed slightly.
Right. And I actually thought there was a picture. There isn't a picture of the map.
No, I didn't see a picture of the map.
Yeah.
Okay. So what would we like to do with this? Laura has approved our, approving it if we are so inclined.
I will, we will approve it.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I'll suck it.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. That's approved. And Deana, I'm guessing that you have an original for signatures?
There's three signatures up there for you guys.
Okay. I'm gonna reorder the agenda first time ever.
In the future, when people send us stuff like this, we should ask for a red line.
You know, that would be helpful. That would.
Yeah, Laura probably got one, but I will ask her to share that kinda stuff.
Hi, Mark. I'll take you after we do this next little bit of.
No worries.
Thank you.
Well, you sat right there. You could handle all. That would be helpful. I would be glad to do it, but people might accuse me of elevating my place.
Oh, dear. So, we have on the agenda, and I know a couple of folks are with us waiting for this discussion, so I'm gonna take it next. And we will take Mark, who's here. Is a report on Pike House rental. This house has been rented for, I don't know how many years, but for the last several years to one family. And the question has nothing to do with the people. But the Select Board has considered an option of perhaps selling this property. With one intent with reducing liability to the town having a rental property. And the other intent to give some hunk of cash into the town coffers, which would be nice to be able to do. So we do have a Realtor who's gone through and looked at the property. The present occupants were very gracious to allow that. We appreciate that. And I believe we have an informal quote of a value of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
We could list it for four or something.
Four fifty.
To clarify, it's on a shared subject and shared well with the town offices. So in addition to just listing the property, we have to have engage of office in some sort to, to draft an agreement for providing for the sharing of those.
Yep, that's right. I should have mentioned that, but yes. So, um.
And just to express my concern, in addition to the money that it would provide to the town, it was possible, you know, reduce taxes at one point, maybe. It seems to me that while we do get rental payments from it, it also occupies a fairly substantial chunk of Deana's time and Matt's time. So, and I think we tend to not value those things, but, but I, they're valuable to me. I, I think having our town employees having to constantly deal with leaking toilets and peeling paint and tenants who are unhappy about this or that, 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 that's just not a good use of town employee time. So by selling the property, we could cut that off.
Right. And, and there is the addition of staff time, but as I said before, there is the issue of liability for the town. Rental properties bring with them some significant liability.
Yeah, and I would just like to say that, uh, to note that whomever has lived there since I started, since we moved over here, have been good tenants.
Yes.
Have been great tenants. And, um, and I don't want anybody to think that's anything to do with it.
No, it's not the tenancy. It's the, it's the town really doesn't want to be a property manager.
Right.
And in addition to the time.
You could have all kinds of problems. You, you know, somebody who, you don't, you're not aware of it, they engage in some sort of illegal activity or drug-related activity, and then all of a sudden you federal seizure issues and, I mean, it just, I don't know. It's a tough thing for the town to be trying to.
Yeah, it is.
Just for clarity, where is Pike House?
Right next door.
Oh, it is this house right here. Okay, thank you.
Corner. Yep, yep.
And you were gonna talk about maybe having a public hearing when you left here, timing of that.
I'm not prepared to set a date for public hearing, but yes, we would.
And the point of the public hearing would be just solicit input and make sure that nobody's too bent out of shape about. Cause we, if I understand correctly, the Select Board has the authority to buy and sell real estate, so we can do this, right?
We can do this. We are required to have a public hearing. We would want to.
Yeah, we want them anyway.
Any case.
Absolutely.
But, yes, and I would think that it probably will occur in April, but if not, the very end of March.
Sure.
Because we have, um, town meeting coming up and school district meeting. We're pretty busy for the next couple of weeks, so.
Yeah.
Once, once we have a date, we'll put it out there, Mark.
I think the other questions you'd wanna just prepare for, for that, are the questions about, um, what's the impact of therefore your ability to expand this property or this building if you needed to, and or the reality is this is a town-controlled space that's right next to the office, and what is that, how does that impact?
Right.
Um, the flexibility of this going forward. Without a doubt, it's, it's a headache potentially and potential liability to be renting it. Um, but obviously, if you let it go.
Yeah, well, you can't get things back once they get gone. But we, we've talked in the past amongst us about would there be some kind of use that the town could make of it at this point? Which might be less intense.
Yeah.
But.
I'm guessing it's also important to think about that if this building was ever needed to be renovated, or if you were expanding for some reason or something like that, the fact that, what's the overall footprint or lot size here is the, all the other factors.
Yeah, that, less of a concern because we can take a municipal exemption.
Yeah.
But, um, if one needed to use that little piece of land, we would need to be talking about a big expansion.
Yeah.
I think there'd be bigger concerns, but that's a good point, yes.
Yeah. And you still have to define their lot line, you know, as Dave said, you need to figure out what's there.
Yep, this would be in.
And you want it used. You would not want it sitting there empty for any amount of time.
It can't sit empty.
Right, yeah.
That destroys the building really, really.
Use it for offices or something.
I think we have some folks with us who may want to speak.
Yeah, maybe.
And if you do, raise your hand or let Deana know, cause I can't see you.
Um, I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Speak up.
So I'm the person who lives in the Pike House. I've been there for nine years. My sister, who's on the call, was there for ten years before me. I guess the only thing I would say is that I'm aware it's an old house. It's very quirky. I absolutely do my best to never reach out to the town unless it is something that causes vast disruption to being able to live, like no heat or flood. But I certainly don't reach out otherwise because I'm aware that they all work full-time jobs that have nothing to do with this house. And as Deana knows, but maybe the rest of you don't, my only request has been to try and stay till my daughter graduates high school, which is in four years, so that I, you know. The future is the most expensive state in the country to live. And, um, it would mean having to move out of Lyme, which would be very hard for my family, but um, I understand that that may not be something you can take into consideration when looking to sell the house, but wanted to put my two sons in that it would be, um, beyond disruptive and devastating for my children.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you speaking up. We were aware of that. Um, we asked.
We had heard, we had, I think we had heard informally that you might have some interest in buying the property if it were put up for sale. Is that still the case?
Uh, my sister and I have, have talked about that. I, she's on the call, so I could let her jump in. But I have been something she'd asked me to inquire about because of the fact that it was, uh, you know, the only school my daughter's ever been to. My son worked at the Lime Country Store. We've been part of Lyme for twenty years. But it's a house that's important to us. It was also the last house my father was in, because he passed away. So it's been a conversation that's been had, yes. But I can let her go finish if she would like.
It's, it's, we've discussed it and it's definitely.
It's, we've discussed it and it's definitely an option. I mean, again, I lived in the house for ten years and I know how much work the house needs at this point, right? So, it's definitely an option. It's on the table. We're discussing it as a family, so you know, this would, this would create a big hardship for Jackie and her family should the house sell and they have to relocate. And so, I definitely want, I mean, Dina has known me now for almost twenty years. I definitely want the rest of you to know that, you know, there's a very real family living here and a family that's created their lives and memories and all the things.
Thank you very much. We appreciate as well both of you coming and speaking and certainly a very real concern that we have taken to heart. Okay, so, I think more from those of you who are here? No, okay. We're gonna move on. Mark Schiffman is here. We're gonna talk about the upcoming warrant for town meeting, but we will be looking at a date to have a public hearing to discuss the pros and cons of this. As I said, it's gonna be out a little bit just because we're really busy right now, but you will see a notice, I'm sure, on the listserv, and Dina is usually pretty good at keeping in touch with you folks particularly. Okay. I've got a note to set the public hearing when we get a chance. Mark?
And Emily.
And Emily.
I have a copy of the warrant for you two up here.
And Emily, so what we're doing, David and Ben, I think you've done this with us before, but prior to the actual town meeting, we go over the warrant and just see what it is, get comfortable with it. If there are going to be questions or we think there may be sticking points, we let Mark know. Emily, you can join us.
I'm up here, sitting next to David. He doesn't bite.
He's sure of it.
Well, I don't know, maybe.
Depends on his mood.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think kind of my question is, as we look through the, in the operating budget and before we go into the reserve funds, what have you seen already as questions of what do you think are the areas that people will be asking more about and what are, what do you plan to present first or how do you want that piece to go?
Well, for my part, and not having to do with the warrant, but before we get into the formal part of town meeting, we had talked about having a five-minute, maybe ten-minute conversation with the folks that are gathered about possibly changing the business portion of town meeting.
Yeah.
And we need a vote on that.
Well, no, so that's, so first on, on the, on the actual printed warrant is the, the vote to give you the freedom to do that in the future. So, this would just be, this would just be a discussion if we'd want to at any point in time during the meeting about how do people feel about it. Part of me thinks we should actually wait maybe until a little more into the need of the meeting, until people are coming, but we can see, um, open.
Okay, so we can leave it as the, cause we had talked about that way back at early.
Yeah, I think, exactly, yeah. I put that before we knew how it had to legally happen.
Can I ask a quick question? And it's a formality question. If it's a ballot, can you even discuss it during town meeting? Because you can't, like for zoning.
So, the key part is we can't, and this is where this gets a little, a little gray. We're not discussing the passage or non-passage of that. The question would be this more open-ended one. I think of, you know, are people in general would appeal to have a different time not to do that. And I'm not sure if this is gonna be because of that. I think there's a real bit of a question.
Campaigning.
Campaigning for it, you know, so that is a little bit.
So, that's interesting.
I can, it's probably, Dina, probably worth me floating a question to, but I also wanted to confirm someone else had asked me recently whether this was a simple majority or whether it was a, there was any higher threshold to adoption. I understand it's a simple majority, but I was gonna put that question to, but.
Well, if you could get.
Yeah, I just read about that and I'll have to, I'll get it for you, cause I have it.
Oh, you do? Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, that would be great to know. So, yeah, I was still laboring under apparently old information.
There's a lot of old information flowing around.
Goes along with my old brain these days.
In my brain, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Typically, I think, so this is gonna be on the ballot, this particular.
So, the question of the ballot is not about moving the meeting per se. The question on the ballot is whether the select board should be granted the ability to do that in the future. So, that's why you're kind of talking about theoretical off of that, but one could argue it influences.
Sure, and I, I did understand that nuance and so this is a ballot article. It's gonna be decided by vote on the paper ballot.
Yeah.
And typically, in the past, we, that would be something that came up at Little Town Meeting.
At Little Town Meeting, yep.
And is there an opportunity tonight to have, at the candidates forum, just to have somebody from the select board come and say a little say ahead of time?
Yeah, I'm not aware that that will be the case. Judy, I think, was fairly clear that she was hosting a candidate's night and that there wasn't going to be a discussion as there might have been at Little Town Meeting. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
So, I don't think you're wrong, but I was gonna say, because it's a petitioned warrant article, that petitioner could ask Judy if they could say something.
So, and now to make life as confusing as possible. I was supposed to be backup tonight to be able to answer those questions. Judy cannot be at the session tonight, so I am now running the session tonight.
Oh, jeez.
I am the petitioner.
Yes.
So, I think there are a lot of hats going on and I'm gonna do my best to give a quick explanation, but not dive that deeply. I think we're gonna need to figure out a way to ask this question again, kind of in the future of people, what they think, because we worked, one, of you asking people both at town meeting, at school district meeting, and people were not attending them because the idea is to get more people in.
Right.
Perhaps we'll, if it passes, we'll have to come up with a strategy where we can.
Actually, get that conversation of what would work best. Because for those of you who are here, you probably know, if anyone's still on that is interested, the goal of this was both from the school side and the town side, trying to get as many people as possible in attendance at these two year meetings and in attendance at both of them, so that we have a broader perspective of people together for both the school and the town business meetings, so.
Well, and it may behoove somebody to send something out on the listserv with information about the reasoning, not necessarily to vote for it or against it, but just explaining it.
Yeah, perhaps we can figure out who that person could be who's not my official position to do that. I'll see what I can, do what I can find.
Absent some sort of town, some sort of message to the town about this, I, my, in the past, when the select board is proposed to do things like this, it's been viewed as a power grab. You know, as sneaky select board people trying to, you know, gather power unto ourselves so that we can, I don't know, whatever, retire to our volcanic lair or something. But, so unless people get that there's, here's the reasoning behind this, my, at least, and I'm terrible at guessing these outcomes, but my guess would be it would be defeat.
I think a little part of us, we will, it will be discussed in some way tonight. It'll at least be presented. And so, we'll see how many people are on tonight. That may help.
And that it's petitioned.
If there are a hundred people on tonight, it's petitioned and approved by the select board. Hopefully, we'll, we'll see, but perhaps we can. I can find the person who's willing to.
Okay.
You have somebody with their hand up.
Yes, sir.
Just from feeling things around, people are confused about the intention of this and what it means and why. So, some explanation is worthwhile having.
Okay, yeah.
And it's also important that it was petitioned. It was not requested by the board. I have had that question, like, oh, interesting.
Now, I did, and I don't know whether it came through or not, but so I did talk to Liz from the Valley News and gave her the background story and said this was a joint, this came out of meetings between the select board, the town moderator, the school moderator, and the chair of the school board.
Chair of the school.
So, whether Liz's piece is gonna come out, or you mentioned it was not the focus. The focus was on other towns that were putting an SB two vote up.
Yes.
And it was, we were kind of a contrast in terms of what we were doing, so.
Yeah, and again, if it does, we do have someone who's speaking tonight. One of the emphasis was if these two meetings were held in accordance with each other, that was a better way to get perhaps more people and a broader understanding, which would mean either the town business meeting would be Thursday or somehow the school would move their meeting to Tuesday after. And we didn't go down that road very far because it was such a moot point until we knew if the select board had authority to even change the meeting. We apparently are one of the few towns that have the voting and the business meeting on the same day. So, it's a kind of antiquated system. Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, we're one of the few towns that has the actual paper ballot and the business meeting, not traditional town meeting, on the same day. Huh, okay.
I know, that always surprises me.
I don't know any better. Good, thank you.
That's what I'm told. All right, so, well, that was fun.
All right, let's get to the real.
Okay, moving right along. The operating budget is, I think, not going to be a very exciting. The capital reserve budget is the same as it's been for the last year.
So, my question about the operating budget is that I get the impression that some people may ask questions during the operating budget
Yep.
about things that have come up over the past year, from the Smiths to other things that, you know, maybe their opportunity to ask this sort of a question of some sort.
I would imagine that would be the case.
Are there any things in addition or any pieces you want me to be aware of or who to go to on those or?
There may need to be an increase in the budget. Is that what I'm aware of? So, but that will be pretty straightforward. We did, on the town side, as on the school side, everybody had a goal of a three point three percent increase narrowed it down significantly. I think we will have not a lot to say about the Smiths. I do expect there will be questioning about that. We have not talked amongst ourselves who would answer questions to that, so when we know who possibly do that, we'll let you know.
I mean, it doesn't, no, I can put it back to select board general.
Justin, if we haven't given you an update on that, we can.
Well, and your attorney will be there too, so.
Yes. Other things in the operating budget, at this point, I don't, I think there was going to be a bit of an issue with the fire department having been cut. Most of those cuts were put back in, and they do have need for a new, what kind of a, it's a truck, but it's a specialized truck. And there just wasn't money in the capital reserve fund to do that this year, so it will be coming up next year. Someone may question that. If people were at the budget committee, they may be aware of that. They may not be aware of that. I'm trying to think of what else in the operating budget that seems out of place. I don't think anything.
Probably the police budget, but that's an easy explanation about the three full-time for half the year and two for the other half.
And then next year will be two full-time.
Right. Not increasing to three full-time employees. That's the important point.
Yes. We do have, people may ask, we do have a position in the executive office for someone who's going to hopefully be on top of grant proposals. And also, as a, as a sort of floating assistant and who also may do input for both the fire department with their paperwork and in the town clerk's office, where needed to help out there. So, that's a new position.
Are those things you're presenting in overview first or no, just like this is the, is it, is one of you gonna do a quick introduction or presentation?
My intent was to focus on the fact that this is a bare bones budget.
Okay.
I don't know how the other board members feel if we, to me, it seems you can draw out a meeting a lot longer than is necessary if you, if we cherry pick items to talk about.
No, totally. My question is basically like, hey, so if someone, someone does it, they have the opportunity to, whoever moves it has the opportunity to speak to it first. The question is whether we want them to defer to you all for a quick presentation or no, the select board are ready to answer questions if you have questions. And you'll give them chip that way.
Yeah, let's do that.
I'm usually the chair of the budget committee. Dick, I give him this one to move, so.
Yes, yep.
And you're gonna do.
Unless you want me to do something different, I'm happy to find people like I usually do.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
additions in personnel are always an issue because it's a constant expense. I would just suggest that somebody be prepared to talk to the need for that to happen, both for the police department and the executive department.
Yep.
Cause people don't like getting people.
No, we know. We always get, well, we don't always, cause we very rarely add. Yes, new positions are tough. Thank you. And in the police department, it's not new positions, it's just a training, a six-month training period. This is a new position, however, and we can certainly explain this. There was a position in the town clerk's office which has not been filled, which is supporting this new person. And thirty years ago, twenty-five years ago, this position did exist, and then it was eliminated. So, it's, it's new to now. Okay, but that's a good point. We should think about how we're gonna explain that.
Yeah. I'm very much in favor of the position, but I expect reactions.
Oh, I do too. I understand. We, the capital reserve funds, as I said, same as last year, people will be happy. We will probably have comments about we need to put more money into the vehicles, the bridges, probably heavy equipment. So, next year, these lines will be bigger. I can't believe that we're gonna be able to keep them where they are. Ben and David, do you have any thoughts on that?
If we sell the house next door, we could.
That's true. That would really help out. I think the rest is really pretty straightforward from my point of view. Mark, as you looked at it, or Emily, as you looked at it, did you see any issues in there that, or scuttlebutt that you've heard? Highway, don't expect that to be an issue, but sometimes people wonder if we're getting too many trucks in the highway department.
I suspect Article nine, there'll be some questions about.
Couldn't hear you.
Article nine.
Article nine, I suspect there'll be questions.
And Scott will be there.
Yes.
In the whole, on that, do you wanna go to Scott first? Do you wanna go to you from there?
I'm happy for you to go to Scott.
You mean for questions to go to?
Yep.
Yes.
I don't know. Milk oil, that's taken care of pretty nicely.
Long since last year, it seemed like an uncombative, you know.
There's nothing new that's jumping out, right?
There's nothing obvious, which.
That's, that is exactly what it sneaks up.
Right.
But, and I think you're right, there will be questions about the Smiths and there's a limited amount that we can say and we'll say it.
Is there anyone other than town council that we'd need to grant voice to?
I don't think so. I don't. If I think of something in the next few days, I'll let you know, but don't think so.
Is an assessor going to be there? Cause sometimes they've been granted the right to speak also.
I don't believe they will be there. We haven't requested it.
I think there's any reason.
Yeah. We've, we've got the contracts ready to go forward with the reassessment. Status quo until then.
Right.
Emily, anything that you can think of?
There's gonna be questions about your petition article.
Well, and in fact, I have a note in draft to send out to the list serve to address that, to say that we need to figure out how to allow buried tanks to be exist on advice of Mike Hensley from that meeting, that planning board meeting.
Okay, so, anything from your end, Emily? So what do you think?
Okay.
We'll look for you tonight.
Yeah, you'll see me tonight.
We will work out who's gonna do what, but I don't think that means.
So it starts at six.
Six o'clock.
Six to seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same way that you explained.
The current plan is Judy is working on trying to give me co-host status so I can do that. We're not currently planning to change the link. The worst case scenario, I think, would just be that if she doesn't, we won't be able to record it.
Won't be.
Able to record the session, but.
Is it purely via Zoom or is there a?
It's purely via Zoom. There is no, there's no option beyond that.
Well, fingers and toes crossed.
Yeah.
And we thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
For helping in touch with you.
We'll see you all next week.
Next week, Tuesday.
After me.
And we should, we usually, as a board, we can do it near the end and then we can go through and see if there's anyone in particular that wants to speak to a particular article. And we can assign ourselves or we can leave it open and have a debate on the floor. Which would be. Yeah.
This is where we would have written in the town report.
Right.
Yes.
That's exactly right. I hope everyone does that, makes it a lot faster.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we've done that. We've done that. Let's go back to reviewing the complaint concern form and procedure. It's a complaint slash concerns form procedure.
And I don't suspect that you have to sit here and talk about it. I was sending it out to get it started so you guys could look at it. And then you can, you know, have future meetings make changes.
So it'll be a little more formalized than just somebody sending email and it wasn't happening.
This actually was done quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
Who is, do you know who this, the select board members or this?
Patty and Sue and Jay.
Jay, I think, yeah.
But anyways, of course, I think at that time we were getting more complaints than we have lately. And, and it was just a way to formally document them and to make sure that they got followed up.
Okay. Yep, yeah, it looks briefly, name and address and nature of the complaint. Here's what you do and it's verbal or it's written, yeah.
We're gonna burn this out like you.
Oh, absolutely. And it also, you know, part of it was to not be reacting to complaints or concerns that came from third parties.
Oh.
And having, you know, the person actually pick the phone up or write in about their concern or complaint, cause there seemed to be a lot of second and third-hand stuff going around at that time, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so let's take a look at it and do you think, David, would you have time?
Great.
Yeah.
Perfect.
After your meeting, that is perfect. We can revise. I will do the same.
Yes. And there's a few more, excuse me, policies and and procedures that as we keep going, I'll be bringing up that need to be relooked at.
It'd be good to get everything kind of put in place.
Let me just ask, is this useful still? Do we need this now? This complaint thing? Cause we ought to not lard up our procedures and.
I know. Well, I think having. I think having a procedure is certainly important. I don't know that it has to be in as much detail and lengthy as this is, but. And I think your attorney would tell you that yes, you should have an official procedure.
How many of these do you get a year?
I haven't had any for quite some time, but yet I also.
But you get phone calls and emails.
Really, well, usually if somebody calls me, I deal with it. You know, and sure, I, you know, you guys hear about it.
If you didn't have one, you'd have a complaint right away.
You, if, if it's a.
I'd like to complain that there's no form for me to file it.
You know, I think it just really depends on what the complaint is, the situation, how serious it is. If it's about an employee, you know, then we have to go to the personnel policy, you know, there's different things.
And what you need is one person to bring up that they weren't treated fairly and their complaint wasn't listened to. It was a, you know, a fixed outcome and you're in court.
Right.
Yeah.
Then you need paper.
Yeah.
Well, and now.
Many make it shorter.
Well, and now a lot of it comes, you know, either a, it's usually not a phone call, it's usually an email. And then, you know, there's a paper trail.
Yep, but it's a good point.
Wasn't before.
So you do have a document.
That's right.
Documentation, okay.
Yeah. Thank you, David, for taking that on.
Yes. I think Scott is coming in to.
Well, he sees the output.
Yes. That's just a signature. That's okay, hey?
My complaint is that it was delivered too.
Yes.
Well.
Here's my thumbprint. Right, he came, he left, he's gone. So we're going to have Scott up next and.
Come right back to that.
Okay, I think he just, I think that was Scott who just wrote in. All right. And then we're looking at a request for some additional funding.
Possibly.
Possibly because of winter material and I imagine mud season.
Yeah, well, while you're waiting for him, I could bring up the ambulance.
Oh, please do.
And we're, you know, not to discuss the contract or anything, but what's happened is the increase.
Hi, Scott.
From twenty-five to twenty-six, of course, their year is.
July.
July to June and we're January to December. So we have for twenty-five, two, two payments that are at last year's rate and two payments that are at the new rate. But it ends up that the total amount that this is going to be just for the contract itself is eighty-two thousand two twelve. And we have budgeted seventy-nine thousand six eighty. I did a four, three or four percent increase, but it's really a six or seven.
Okay. So we're.
Do you have any data about how often we use that? How many, how many times a day do we actually pay maybe grand a year for, for, to buy ambulance services from the county handover essentially, right?
Right.
Yep.
Or, or what does that come out to per, per usage or how?
I don't know. We can get the calls, you know, we would know how many calls, but we, yeah, you have to, you have to have an ambulance available for your town, so.
Probably.
Contract one. But the fees they go, that they charge themselves come from the person. So we're paying this plus the person that's getting moved is paying their insurance company or them are paying.
We usually have a number from the skiway and there's a separate agreement about how that's taken care of. And, and then, well, when I had to be taken by ambulance, my insurance paid it and.
Typically, that's what happens.
Typically, that happens, so.
They pay at least some of it. Like last year, we had to pay two people's additional charges. One was a hundred dollars, one was one thirty-six, but the ambulance.
But this eighty grand isn't that. This is a.
This isn't that. This is.
This is just, just, just for the right to play.
Correct.
This is just an entry fee.
And if you didn't have them, you'd have to have, well, I suppose Upper Valley ambulance or Lebanon. Any further than that, it's a long time getting here.
It sounds, yeah. It sounds like Lebanon's not an option for us, but. But Upper Valley, and we've looked at that, well, we did look at that. I don't know how many years ago, quite a few years ago, but then it was decided to stay with Hannover. Those are the pros and the.
The money's an issue here.
Yeah.
You don't think money's an issue?
It's packed life. We need an ambulance service and a caution.
I'm at my house having a heart attack. I want.
Want me here?
I want Hannover here, fast.
I just wish they'd put a better suspension in there.
So anyway, so we need an additional amount of money.
Three thousand dollars, right?
Pardon me?
About three thousand.
And, and that just covers the contract?
Right.
Forget about if we're stuck with any ambulance bills that people have not paid.
Yep.
Because we are in this contract obligating the town to pay those also.
Right.
Generally, the company that bills the individuals either collects the money and if they don't, they turn it to us. And generally, people pay it, but not always. So you end up paying an eight hundred dollar or a twelve hundred dollar ambulance bill.
And do we usually have a line in our?
In our revenue, we have a line where money comes in when people pay us back for what we've paid. But we do not have, I usually put in.
Extra.
To.
Do we budget something for?
I usually put in a couple of thou, two or three thousand extra each year to cover just in case we have bills that we have to pay. But that's not in here because the contract is higher than what we.
Expected.
It was in there, but it's higher than what, what we expected.
So our buffer is being used up and we're still under what we need. So if we needed three thousand and now we're gonna need five thousand to have some money in there to cover.
So what is the request here? That we add some money to the budget or?
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that if your ambulance bill is gonna be eighty-two thousand two twelve just for the service and we've only budgeted seventy-nine six eighty, that you need to at least have that much, if not.
Plus another five grand or three grand or something. What is the typical out of pocket for, for people who don't, who don't or can't pay their ambulance bill?
You never know. Oh, out of pocket, you never, I never know. It depends on what they've done. Some people, it's highest.
On average, what do we end up paying a year? I don't, not individually, but in aggregate.
I'd have to look that up, but I think, you know, we, we pay some years a thousand, some years three thousand.
So split the difference with two, so we need five total to be close. Have we ever talked to Hannover to say, gee, can we, you know, we're on a different fiscal calendar, can we hold off for six months to get the increase when our new year begins? Cause we didn't factor that in? Have we ever tried that?
Well, it's actually, what I did was the contract itself is eighty-five thousand thirty-three dollars.
Oh, okay, so you reduced.
Because they're doing July to June.
Right.
So I took this year's figures for.
No, I understood that.
Okay, so it's less, but, yeah, no, they're not gonna change their contract year because of that.
No, they won't change their contract year.
Physical year.
Our, our, what we owe, we.
Oh, yeah.
Could ask to have it be, all right. Yeah, I agree. So five thousand dollars from the floor. For what line is that, Dana?
It's line, oh God, I don't know on the budget sheet. I have my printout here, but I can tell you after.
Okay, so we need to let Mark Schiffman know we've got that coming. And Scotty, bring us your good news.
Well, as you guys know, we've had a lot of storms.
Storms and mud seasons.
Salt and sand. I'd like that's for more money. You and I were talking fifteen thousand to get us another thousand tons of sand. Who knows what the rest of this year's gonna bring.
Yeah.
You've used twice as much.
Yeah.
Sand.
As well.
From twenty-four during these months than this year. Or from twenty-five, you've used, you've used more in twenty-five than you did in twenty-four, twice as much.
Maybe brought in, they brought in three thousand yards, pretty low, over three thousand last year. I've been through like twenty-six, twenty-seven. I mean, that's just a, a rough.
Yeah.
It's, I'm sure it's more than that. A way more than that, I mean. They don't look it. They look from the front of the file, but we've been taking it with that. It's been a long time since we seen.
Didn't go away so bad. Is it, the people taking it, have they taken a lot of it or just, no, it's like a bucket or two at a time?
Yeah, it's, it's us.
I think that's very nice of the town, isn't it?
Is it done?
They, if you wanted a bucket or two of sand, you could come in and shovel it in a bucket and take it at no cost.
The sand your walkway or whatever.
Your steps.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But that's not, that was fifteen thousand.
Well, and the other thing is the salt.
The salt. What was it, twenty-two?
Yeah.
Around twenty thousand, just in salt. This is just from the, the first of the year.
Yeah.
This is all, the sand is just from the first of the year. We had. I was just talking to Alan the other day, cause Alan keeps track of it. Probably better than we know. You could recall him. I think this twenty, I've called him out twenty-one times since the first of January.
Right.
Yeah.
And we still have three weeks of winter left. That's the other thing.
At least.
And the icy, I guess, you have more sand you're using, you have more salt you're using.
I mean, the sand, we should start, you know, start using lots cause the sun's hotter.
Right.
But.
But.
I mean, I don't feel like, I don't feel like we've wasted any sand this year. I mean, we've, you know, been having the guys cut back a little bit.
Well, and you've still got a plan for next, next early winter.
Right.
So we need some residual.
For November and December.
I mean, it looks like there's a lot of sand there. They really are.
Yeah, yeah. So this would be a request at town meeting for an additional, what did it say? Fifteen-five?
Yeah.
Fifteen-five.
That's for about a thousand additional yards of sand. That's what that equals. Fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
So a thousand yards. Okay.
No, no, I realize years passed and I've used all the winter material, but we haven't had the winters. I mean.
This is.
I really don't call this a winter, but it's been these small storms. And it should do, it takes us as much as a foot.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, and then it warms and you get a softening and then you gotta put stuff on the road and.
I mean, the salt, the salt is what gets me. I mean, I just, I don't know where it comes. And I mean, we don't use like all our big storms and stuff. I mean, I talk to Alan a lot because, you know, he dealt with it, you know. And we didn't solve these big storms until the end. We put a little sand on the hills and waters. So really, I mean, compared to what, I mean, the state was, just. So really, I mean, compared to what, I mean, the state was just continuously solved, I mean, but it makes it, it makes it slippery, I mean.
I didn't, I did not personally get any complaints about the conditions of the river.
Well, you haven't. I haven't had any.
Yeah.
They do complain, tell them to use the form.
That's what I tell them, send me a map.
Sue McKenzie, I think, has a question.
Hey, Sue. Hi, Sue. What's up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask.
Thank you.
About, there's a course through the Rhodes Lecture Series at UNH on salt reduction, especially along the river. I was wondering if any of your crew has taken that course?
I took it probably six years ago, was Steve. I think you were on the board then.
Right, yeah, I went down and took the course as well. I think it'd be a good idea to refresh yourselves on that, and, and because there's a, there's a lot of salt piled up on the roads, and it, we can't do with less, and this is an excellent course, and I would highly recommend that all the crew be trained in how to do that.
I honestly don't see how you could go less than what we're putting out, so.
That's what the course is all about.
I know.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Good suggestion. All right, how do we feel about requesting an extra fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars at town meeting? Thank you, Ben.
One second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor, say aye. Judy, aye. Okay, so you'll be up to, do you want one of us to explain it? Okay, I'll need a refresher course. It's approved, and we will put it forward. You'll be there in case there are specific questions. Oh, yeah, that's your favorite thing.
And did you move the five thousand for the ambulance?
All of it.
All right, thank you.
Just want to make sure.
All those in favor?
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved. So we'll be asking for an extra fifteen plus five, twenty thousand five hundred and fifty on, in our operating budget. That's just the way it goes.
So does this go in the additional business that comes before the meeting, or does this go in the operating budget?
This goes, this is gonna go in the operating budget, but it will be from the floor at the business meeting.
Right.
Yep. When we talk about the town operating budget.
I think that one of the materials that's happened before, I think, I remember Jake getting them asking.
Yeah, there was a year, the Chase Smith you're talking about, yeah, yeah.
So it's the winter materials line. Yeah, I think everybody who's lived here this year understands that it's been unusual. So it was too bad.
And I think the point that Scotty made is that a one-inch snowfall and a ten-inch snowfall uses the same amount of sand.
Yeah.
So that, that wasn't something that I understood at the outset.
So these little storms take as much or more material than the great big ones.
Yep.
I mean, if we have a big, big storm and we're not coming back come morning, we will do, we will sand hills and corners. I mean, it's not.
But it's, but to say it's a, it's a small storm.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that there's no materials used.
No, yeah, I mean, it's, it's nearly twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five years.
Okay, Dana, if you want it, we'll get together at the end of the week, and you can help me with the amounts.
Yeah, I can look those right up, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Did you, you have a non-public with us coming up? Oh, wonderful, police chief, did you need us for something in public session?
No, ma'am.
Okay, it's nice to have you with us, but we're gonna kick you out. We're going into non-public session.
Wow. Pretty brave, throwing the chief of police out.
Let's see, the fire department isn't gonna take care of my house if it burns, you're not gonna come by if someone's robbing me. I wonder who else I can estrange.
Just give the robbers Harvey, they'll leave.
I'll tell him you said hello.